Okay, we're back, uh, both of you move that we're back in the regular center.
I'll move second.
Second, old favor.
Aye.
Both, carry. Okay, uh, first advocate, who's on board? Well, Mr. Garey is not going to be here, it's going to be adjourned. So we have to go on the way. Are you adjourned? We're okay on the line and everything?
We're gonna have to, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna have to confirm that, but we'll check and make sure that it's adjourned. Uh, if it, if it is not, then, then we're gonna have to ask the applicant for an extension upon it.
Okay.
But under the circumstances, I, I would, I would expect, unless we have some real knucklehead who's trying to do this, I would expect that we wouldn't get that kind of cooperation.
Are we gonna hear Mr. McElvee?
No.
Not gonna hear. So if you're here for Garey or McElvee, they will not be heard tonight.
Yeah, so we'll be adjourned then to the, to the next meeting.
They, they will notice.
What's that?
They will notice us.
Yeah, they will notice for the next, for the, for the January.
January.
Whatever, what, what's our first January meeting?
Third, third one.
Third free organization meeting.
So we'll do that on the weekly?
We don't, we don't have to simulate.
They do the renotice.
What?
You're gonna have to renotice.
Why would we have to renotice, we're here tonight?
Because you're not, because, because the board can't exercise jurisdiction over your application. Bottom line.
Steve. I understand we're on for the first meeting, but you want to grant, what happens if you don't get the, the approval on the second?
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing on, on the, on the, on the permit in January, I just, I didn't think we needed to renotice.
We can't carry, no, we can't carry the notice because the board couldn't, because of the fact that there's an issue with it, the ownership issue comes up, the board is divesting the jurisdiction because of that issue. When you get that fixed, we can exercise jurisdiction, and that situation will be carried.
So they will be on the agenda for January 18th?
Yes. Is that the first meeting?
Yes.
This used to be a calendar.
Okay, next application, Mr. McElvee? Okay, Mr. McGlocklin, well, Mr. O'Neil must recuse himself. Mr. Chairman, may I, is some seats still there?
Certainly.
Definitely.
Thank you. What do you have, what do you want to do?
Ready when you are.
Mr. Chairman? For you?
Okay. Chair, your parents, please counsel?
Certainly. Uh, good evening, I'm Jordan Friedman of Escola de Sullivan, Middlesex, New Jersey. This evening, I'm here on behalf of Jose and Jerusha, Jerusha Fanko. Um, we appreciate the opportunity to present the application. And, uh, the Fankos are the owners of 64 Mercer Street. Uh, on Borough's Tax Map, it is identified as lot six, block 109. Uh, this application is for both variance approval. The subject property is located in the R2 zone. It is a corner lot. The lot area is 7,872 square feet. Uh, currently, it is a vacant parcel of land. Uh, it was previously approved with a single family dwelling that was destroyed by the remnants of Hurricane Ida and a gas explosion at a neighboring property. We need both variance approval, um, in order to commit the construction of a new single family home. Uh, the plans that have been submitted and upon which we rely, uh, are the plans by Signature Building Systems dated April 21st, 2022, and last revised, uh, dated May 23rd, 2022. Um, and there's also a variance map prepared by Titus Surveying Engineering dated June 20th, 2022. Regarding the variances themselves, um, uh, the item that we, we are here for is a front yard setback to West Summit Street. 25 feet is required. Uh, previously existing, there was 10.3 feet, and under the proposal, uh, it is 13.7 feet. Uh, if granted, uh, variance will eliminate pre-existing non-conforming front yard setback uh, issues to Mercer Street of 20 feet, 20.31, 20.30, 20.3 feet. Uh, our witnesses this evening are Mr. Fanko and Mr. Titus, who is in the room with us. Uh, our first witness would be Mr. Fanko. Mr. Chairman?
Excuse me, quick question.
Yes.
Did you used to sit in this seat?
I did not.
Covering for Larry?
I did not.
Okay.
It was a different, uh, same last name, but different.
Different, uh, not Larry Vessel?
No, but I think it is, I am partner. I work at a firm that was Mr. Vessel's. Yes.
Larry was a good guy. He's a good guy. Okay.
Sir, would you stand and raise your right hand, please?
Yep.
Okay, please. You solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, so help you God.
Yes.
Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Jose D. Fanko, F.E.N.C.O.
Very good. Counsel, your witness?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Fanko, uh, you own 64 Mercer Street? Yes. And for how long have you owned the property? Since 2007. Okay. And, uh, do you also reside there? Not at the time.
You're right. Wait.
Yes.
Wait, first of all, did you reside there?
Yes. Nobody saw the tents out. That's okay, right? Um, and who did you live at the property with? Uh, my wife, Jerusha, my daughter Sophia, uh, little daughter Sully and Jashra. Okay. And before the natural disaster, um, did you describe the improvements on the property? What were they? Uh, years into getting to the house, we've got a new roof. Uh, then when the kids started growing up, we've got a deck, a backyard, um, where pretty much the big, um, upgrades that we did. So it was a single family home, you made some improvements to it over time? Yes. Um, and now it's vacant land? Yes. Um, and although I, you may have heard me say it in my opening, what happened to the property, but could you, uh, tell the board what happened to, to the property that it's now vacant? Uh, yes, so on Wednesday, 71st, 2001, we experienced the remnants of Hurricane Ida around 9:00 PM, and we saw water coming in through our basement windows. My wife and I proceeded to move some of our items from basement to the first floor. Uh, but water then began to come up through the toilet on the first floor. And I went out on the front porch and my neighbor Antoinette Kaufman, two houses out at 60 Mercer Street, asked us if we wanted to stay with them as our house was surrounded by water. My wife, along with my three children and I, left our house at about 9:30. At the time we left, we waited through water that was above our knees and rising. And while at the Kaufmans' home, we were in and out of the house, checking to see whether the water, uh, was, you know, how, how the level of the water was. And, uh, and then we're also trying to help, uh, the people who are driving by, stopping them from continuing going on Mercer Street. Around 11:30 PM, there was a loud bang, which we would rather, we would learn that it was a gas explosion at 62 Mercer Street. Uh, this house was in between our house and the Kaufmans' house. Uh, the ceiling, windows, doors and glass were all around us. I looked out where there should have been a window and saw embers and knew something was on fire. The front entrance of the house, we were staying in, was blocked with the breach and the back entrance was flooded. Uh, we knew we had to leave immediately, and so one of our neighbors was able to push aside the breach that was blocking the front entrance, and we were able to climb over the remnants, the remnants of the breach. And once we knew everyone was out of the house, I took my family to Somerville Middle School, where they had open a shelter. Eventually, we went to, we went back to our house around 3:00 AM on Tuesday, September 2nd, as we had no other place to go, and I spoke with the fire chief, who informed me that I would not be able to enter my house as it was deemed uninhabitable. Hours later, we will begin going through the process of insurance. Based on conversations with engineering insurance company, was determined that the house, including the foundation, needed to be demolished. And was it in fact demolished? Yes. So what, what is the, the basic reason for tonight's application? What is it that you're trying to do at the property now? Um, prior rebuild and asking the board to, uh, for the variance. So are you looking to rebuild a single family home? Yes. Um, will this home have a garage? No. Uh, what about a basement? Will it have a basement? Uh, it will have a crawl space. Are you able to describe the floor plan? Yes. That, uh, your contractor will build for you? Yes, so the first floor will have a kitchen, dining room, living room, office, full bedroom and laundry area. Uh, the second floor will have three bedrooms, a working closet and a full bathroom. Uh, will have crawl space, no basement and attic only for storage. Uh, overall, would you, would you say that the house that we want to build is similar in size to the home that was destroyed? Yes. How come in square feet?
2000 square?
Yep.
I have 2028, might be off a little bit.
Yeah, thank you. If, the way I'm explaining it is that my basement used to be my office and storage area, so I'm putting that in the first floor. And it used to be a two and a half story house, and the attic was where our girls used to sleep, and so that's gonna be on the second floor.
What's the total square footage of the lot? 7,000? That's a big lot.
7,872.
That's a big lot for that area.
Yeah.
Because there was CP variance. Because all the, all the lots in that area are, are narrow by design.
Yeah, it's a modular house with a wraparound deck on the front and the side, and you have a porch on the rear.
Yep.
And then the driveway for the party.
Yes. That was my conference house.
Yeah. I saw that, I saw that with the information provided at the, at our work.
Yes.
120 years ago, if you went through your neighbors across the street, they owned my great grandparents, they owned a house across the street.
But I see a, a detail on the foundation, that looks like the first floor is gonna be about three feet above the finished grade, and are you required, because of the flood area, to have the blowout, um, vents in the crawl space so the water can go through?
Technically, now, no.
That's gonna happen.
If the regs are proposed to be changed, and this engineer picked up, that they're gonna be raised the flood hazard elevation by two or three feet. Right now, technically, the property is not in the flood hazard zone, I think it's 52, 50 feet right now, but it's proposed to be raised to 52, so they're raising the house to 50, I mean, uh, 42, what is it?
50, it's 50.
50, okay, 52, and I think finished floor is 55, we're going three or four feet above, so the crawl space is gonna be four or five feet. And the, it's a good idea, the, the engineer put in the flood, uh, breakaway, uh, louver windows, Dan, just to accommodate that. Technically, it's not required right now, but it's just good practice. Really good practice.
Right, so at the, at the worst situation, the first floor is three feet above, three feet above grade.
Okay. And so the board is aware Mr. Titus is prepared to testify regarding that point, so the board has the benefit of expertise. All right, now, Mr. Fanko, if you had the opportunity to review the call and associates' report dated November 27th, of 2022. Now, when you reviewed, did you see that in section four of the report, it begins on page five, that, uh, the report invites, uh, you to provide answers to some expressed and implied questions? Yes. Okay. So in section four, subsection A, 1A, uh, do you see the section that asks you to, um, give some information about colors and, and, uh, information about length divides? Do you see that? Yes. Uh, is there anything that you can tell with the word about, uh, the color and the length divides, uh, as, as, uh, you're being asked to do? Yes, uh, so we're, we're thinking of going with light blue, how, uh, siding, and, uh, but we would like to, it will be 80% of the decision was made, but, uh, we would not like to withhold to that in case, you know, something changes. So this is almost the final? Almost the final decision, yes.
But then life won.
Yes. And regarding the windows, they will have internal divides. All right, in, in, uh, section four, A1B, uh, you're asked to, if you can, provide some information about the type of columns and rails, uh, spindles, steps, decking and so forth. Is that something that you're able to comment on? Yes. Okay. Uh, it will be four by four closed, classroom with closed fasteners and the sleeves that will be PVC type. Uh, the spin, the spindles will be square, PVC balusters, uh, and then the flooring will be truck style. Correct. Um, the, there's no seeming question, uh, in section four A1C, but in section four A1D, uh, there's, there's a request for some testimony regarding the attic space. Now, is the attic space, uh, livable area? No, it will just be storage. How do you get up to the attic? With a, a pull down staircase.
Cause of the hatch.
Yeah. In section, uh, four A2 of that report, uh, there's a statement that all utilities to the building should be underground if, uh, being upgraded. So is that, uh, a statement that you would agree with and the plan and construction will conform to? Yes. And in section four A3, um, there is some inquiry about the location of compressors, and it is, uh, suggested that, uh, the compressor should be elevated above the floor hazard elevation and located on the southeastern side of the building. Uh, have you reviewed that, uh, with, with your contractor? Yes. And this is something that can be accomplished? Yes. Now, on page eight of the call and associates' report, uh, there's a sub, paragraph number nine, can you see that? So paragraph nine, uh, refers to a gravel driveway, which is reflected on, uh, Mr. Titus' plan. Um, and the gravel driveway, uh, your, your neighboring, your neighbor on lot seven encroaches onto your property, is that correct? Yes. Okay. And it is being suggested that there should be a written agreement between your neighbor and you regarding the, uh, encroachment itself. Do you see that in the report? Yes. Okay. And, um, you're being invited to discuss, uh, that request, and what, what is your response to that part of the report? Uh, yeah, so I would, you know, look into, uh, the possibility of such agreement with my neighbor, uh, but I would like not to withhold, uh, from that in case, you know, there's a sale in the future.
Oh, I understand, that was, that was the softest pitch I could get. Right, trust me, the board knows that this was a commercial application, there would be a lot more language in there, but I understand, I think everybody understands why you're here, I'm just encouraging you to, to address that sometime in the future, should the board take the same, that's all, just encourage.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
No, no. In my opinion, not bad.
Mr. Fanko, is there anything else that you'd like to tell the board about the, uh, plan that you have for the redevelopment of the property, um, that you may not have covered in any questions? I would just would like to say thank you for, for your time, and, uh, my, my family and I are eager to start rebuilding and going back to Somerville, where currently, uh, we study in, uh, Richwater, which is a nice town, but we'd love to come back to.
Right.
But that's not Somerville, you're right.
Blue Beach, being a home.
Yes.
I had a comment for her about the driveway width. I was trying to, hoping you'd go a little wider so you can get two cars side to side, so they're not stacked on top of each other.
I mean, uh...
It might be a little bit of an improvement coverage, I'm not 100% sure, but if you're doing this new house?
Yeah.
You wanna, I'd rather not see stacked parking, I don't know how the board feels about that. There's plenty of, your, the width comply, you could go to 20 feet or 22 feet, it's not a new variance for the driveway width. Just throwing it out to you.
Yeah, we, uh, briefly spoke with our, our sole engineering here, we, we can do that. And, yep, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I don't have any additional questions for Mr. Fanko.
Anyone from the board have any questions over the testimony just given on Mr. Fanko?
Just one comment, um, describing that as, hope you heard, that, that boom was heard like 20 miles from here. That was quite a boom.
It was.
We all heard it.
I know, because I was speaking to Ed that mor, that morning, and the first responders from White House and South Michael, they said they heard it.
Yeah.
So being right next door to it, that must have been one heck of a boom.
You know, a lot of people ask that, and my neighbors are here too, uh, the Kaufmans, and it, it happened so fast that we can't really recall those very first few seconds. I just remember my kids screaming and my daughter had a cut, and her face was filled with blood, but, um, but yeah, I mean, it was, it was surprising, and we're glad that, uh, that we were able to survive that. And not only us, but my neighbors, because there were two other neighbors in that house, plus everybody else around us, you know?
I know my chair's got damaged by that. Didn't realize that one of these stained glass windows got blown out. Oh, anyone from the audience have any questions of the testimony given by Mr. Fanko? Okay. Thank you.
Uh, good evening, sir. Um, you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
W. Leland Titus, T.I.T.U.S.
Thank you, Mr. Titus. Counsel, your witness, sir.
Thank you, Counsel. Um, Mr. Titus, for the benefit of the work, can you, uh, tell us about your educational and professional experience, please?
I have a, um, AAS degree for it. Paul Smith College, up in, upstate New York in ecology and environmental technology. I have a BS in civil engineering from the University of Wisconsin. Um, I've been a licensed professional engineer since 1985. I'm a licensed professional, I'm also.
Could you give us three words, a local, or that you live in here, ready for?
Watch on the Warren Green Brook.
Okay.
Brooklyn Field. I've never been here.
Welcome to Somerville.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Titus, Mr. Fanko.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, based upon Mr. Titus' testimony, you know, we'd like him to be qualified as an expert.
Stick to his qualifications.
Thank you. Mr. Titus, are you familiar with the, uh, site that the Fanko's own?
Yes, I am.
That's 64 Mercer?
That's correct.
And in connection with tonight's both variance application, which pair of plans?
Yes, I did.
And what were those plans?
The, um, plans entitled Fanko Parkville and Lot Six, block 109, over Somerville, dated June 20th, 2022.
And could you describe the site as it currently exists?
As it currently exists, it's a vacant site. It slopes in a easterly direction, um, it's fronted on Mercer Street and, and West Summit Street. The, uh, smaller frontage on Mercer Street is 50 foot, and the frontage on West Summit Street is 150 foot. Um, this property slopes, um, from 54 feet at Mercer Street, and then on the easterly side, um, adjacent to lot seven, it has an elevation of about 51 feet near mainlet in West Summit Street.
And under the proposal, Bill, can you describe what's proposed?
Um, what's proposed is a, um, two-story residential dwelling on a crawl space. Um, there's the Peter Brook, which is north of West Summit Street, and that's the, uh, port that caused the problem. Um, based on, um, a map that, um, uh, is put out by FEMA, the flood elevation, 100 year flood elevation in this area is, is 50 feet. Um, to that, it's, it's called the, uh, fluvial method three, which is something in a DEP manual on how you work with these flood zones, you're supposed to add a foot to that elevation, and that's the flood elevation, which is 51 feet. Um, they're talking about the DEP and they're working on raising it to two feet based on some of these storms that we've had lately. They haven't done it yet. Um, if you look at the map, there's that inlet that I talked about by West Summit Street, and that has an elevation of 51, so that's roughly the flood hazard elevation, and that's not on the property, there's no, um, flood elevation on the property. But practically speaking, it did flood, as Mr. Fanko described, and something needs to be done about that. So we, we went through, um, what would be a good elevation for the house with respect to Mercer Street, and that's, and, and we, um, I, I had it originally set up at, um, 57 feet, um, which is, um, six feet above the flood elevation, so that's pretty reasonable. Mr. Fanko asked me to add another foot to it, so I said, I'd try with me. But, so it works out, it's on a crawl space, it has the flow-through vents, and there's a formula in the DEP manuals on how many flood vents you need, so I've done it as if it was in a flood zone, and, and, and I designed it that way. I've also, um... I've also, we don't have to apply to the DEP, the DEP's not involved. But if they, if they did raise the flood elevation, and we did have to go, this would fall into a general permit by certification number five, which is for the reconstruction, relocation, expansion and/or elevation of a building outside a floodway. So this would, if it was in a flood zone, it would be all the DEP requirements.
Are we losing anybody yet, Bill?
Yeah.
Keep going.
So that's, the method we're like madness here.
You do that in the clock, I'll represent the town, so now it's unusual. Good job.
Insofar as the variances that's needed tonight, can you describe what we're asking the board for?
Um, you know, lots 50 foot wide and there's a side yard requirement of eight feet. And then there's a front yard requirement of 25 feet. And both Mercer Street and West Summit Street are streets and they require 25 foot. So 25 and eight is 33, so you have 17 foot left to build a house. And that's really narrow for a house. So that's why it's, we're asking for a house that's 25 foot wide and that house would be 14.7 feet off the right-of-way line to the house. The existing house was 10.3 feet off the right-of-way line. So we're improving that situation. In addition to that, we have a rough round porch, which would then be 9.7 feet off the right-of-way line. The right-of-way line is, the heavy line that's shown on the plan and the proposed condition map. And the curving is further to the north and that's, you know, additional land that you wouldn't know it's not the property, but it's there. It's probably over 50 feet between the right-of-way line and the curb.
So you're squaring the building off?
We're making it parallel to the prop, to the sideline and parallel to West Summit Street. The original house was set up, or parallel with Mercer Street. And twisting it the other way to get a little bit more room to minimize the variances.
So is there a way that you can tell during Ida how high that water got on that property?
No. Just based on Jose's descriptions.
It was high though, Floyd also, who said, I tried to drive my truck through it, I can.
That's really smart.
Worked 17 hours.
So.
Talk in layman's terms about how high that first floor is going to be off the sidewalk.
Off the sidewalk by West Summit Street or the sidewalk by Mercer Street?
Mercer and West Summit.
Mercer, it's, 52 is the, is the street elevation right opposite the house. And the lowest floor, which is the first finished floor, is 58 feet, so that's six feet. And Mercer Street is at 54, so it's four feet above Mercer.
Right. The reason why I asked this to you because it was a heck of a storm, I'm sure there's going to be another one that's not too far behind it. It's in your testimony that you feel comfortable, confident that we're raising this building high enough where that first floor will not be affected?
Yes, sir.
I agree with you. He's putting it in the air.
Good, okay, thank you.
I wanted to put a garage number, but Mr. Fanko didn't want to help with that. So that would have been even higher, but still, you don't want to get into building height issues also, that's. Right, you want to try to keep it, so you need those requirements.
So Lee, you're going to have all utilities about the finished floor then? Panel box, all electrical?
Yes, yes, all that, so.
You're not putting anything in the crawl space?
Nothing's in the crawl, but the crawl is big enough so that you can get in there to do whatever you need to do or fix the plumbing or anything like that.
Sorry.
Puncicles, we.
And you saw my comments on the roof leaders tying them in to catch base in and stuff.
I like that idea.
Potential stuff.
Sometimes get upset about that, but I'm glad you said that.
What's the alternative?
If you don't want to know, I'll tell you.
We're not going to do dry wells.
Yeah.
And these soils, no, it's not going to work, so yet.
Anyone else on the board have any questions of the testimony given by Mr. Titus?
Heating systems, where's that going, somewhere on the first floor or the attic?
I, I'm not sure, it's not going in the crawl space.
I saw like the water heater, but I didn't see the furnace.
How are you finding?
Are they going gas or electric?
What was I giving you, sir?
Yeah, it will be right under the stairs to the basement, right?
Yeah. But to the basement?
No, not us, the crawl spaces.
Yeah, the stairs will be coming to the second floor and.
I don't think there is any stairs to the crawl space, are there?
Right, no, they're not. This is the builder, he could be sworn in and he can testify.
Yes, please.
He's sworn in for purposes. Would you come forward and start?
Yeah.
Please raise your right hand. You saw my word, the testimony you're about to give this night will be the truth, so I hope you got it?
Yes.
Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Richard Maddaluna. M.A.D.D.A.L.U.N.A.
Very good, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sorry, just had a question with you.
I, it's been such a while since we did this plan, I gotta look real quick, but.
Sure.
I mean, is that filed with the board by chance or is this, this is, okay, okay.
The construction plans were filed, they're 11 by 17.
I just want to confirm that for the record, okay. Please go ahead, sorry. Yeah, so if we look at it, I'm sorry, I was wrong with saying the stairs, because we got to get a direct vent out. So we can't run that across, but you see where the washer and dryer is?
Right, one of those closets.
One of the closets, right.
And so the board knows, this is going to come in sections and be craned in this place once the foundation is done?
Yeah.
And then from a permitting perspective, the codes is going to look for the hookups, correct? Everything else is done, right?
Yeah. But there's about 300 of them over there. No, I'm not saying, I mean, where does this time go, you know?
Once you get the foundation in, it's quick.
Yeah, I use superior wall foundation.
Okay.
And one day you have a foundation after you dig and prepare and set it. You know, it's really a great way to go and they're 10 times stronger than block or anything. We used them down the shore when, when the storm hit Sandy down there, but we did so. I'm familiar with a lot of that, because all our stuff is local here, but down there you had to learn a whole new animal, you know? And, you know, all them vents going in and raising the condensers, you know, the compressors or other. So I kind of got a good education down there on that kind of flooding stuff.
We don't have this family having to live in virtual anymore.
Yeah.
Really? We want them back, back to the building.
That's why I had the question about raising the, the platforms or off the side of the house.
Yeah.
Pressure's off.
And that's what we did down the shore.
Right.
Probably.
Because we're getting 100-year floods about every six years now.
Yeah, right.
We have to be prepared.
Yeah, for sure.
I think that, that part of the group was moved, well, probably about 50, 60 years ago, wasn't it, Warren?
Close to it.
Yeah.
Maybe you remember.
It was really loud.
Wow.
Anybody have any questions of the testimony just given? Anybody from the audience have any questions of the testimony just given? I do have one quick question, and probably from Mr. Fanko. What was the original square, the square footage of the previous house?
It was 550, 550 foot per area. So you could just have double.
About 1100 square feet.
Right.
Including the deck and stuff, it was 1251.
Plus the deck and the driveway and everything else.
Minus the driveway.
So we are making it much bigger. That's good, that's good. These are, all these houses were small because the lots were designed to be small. For a former, a former board attorney used to call on that area America's first urban renewal project. It was, well, it was, it was, we're talking about it this morning, it was along with a gentleman named Samuel Davenport, which the street is named after. And what he did, he had property from High Street all the way down to probably where the apartments are. And what he did was he got, he divested himself, he subdivided all those properties and had a lottery. For 25 bucks, you could buy a lottery ticket for one of the properties. And the first, the drawing, the first person not only got a parcel of land, but Samuel Davenport's house. A lot of those, like, my church is on, in that area and was an area we're going to have to look at, Ernie and I talked about it before. Every, every lot there was narrow, this was being 50 foot wide is unusual down there because my church is on 30 by 100. The people on either side are 28 by 100. So every house that wants to do something has to come in to get a variance. Samuel Davenport, like I said, he did all these, he got rid of most of them and the ones that he didn't, people just squatted and stayed there for years and then took plane through. But it was considered America's first urban renewal project back in the day. Welcome to the building, a little bit of building history.
So Lee, you okay with that comment about putting the full-face curve in where?
Yes, yes, I can put a detail on there. I think we're going to have to do an individual site plan for this, for the application, and I could probably catch all those at that time and just note it on this.
I'm, I'm trying to expedite this, so I was hoping you could put the notes, I got the sidewalk note in there.
I could put all the notes on this and set the detail right on this plan.
That's what I was hoping you'd do, because obviously we have to get through compliance and for construction permits can initiate. So I'm just trying to make sure we get these plans, the minor changes or corrections.
Yeah, I'll get those in the next couple of days.
Okay.
If it would be useful to the board, I did have one other question for Mr. Titus and it goes like this. Mr. Titus, page seven of Mr. Cole's report is subsection D, titled General Comments. In paragraphs one through eight, there were various recommendations. Are you in agreement with all of the recommendations in paragraphs one through eight?
Yes, I am.
And then the site is, it's short, a couple of street trees and I said in the report that, given the extreme circumstances here, maybe the board wants to consider waiving these street trees. Normally, if they can't put them in, we get a contribution made, but I just threw it out to the board. I think he's down, or short two or three trees. I think I listed one tree and I think there's two, but the Mercer, I don't think there's any street trees.
There's two along Mercer, one is in front of Lot Five.
The summit, right.
And then, and then one is in front of this lot, they're 12-inch passways.
I appreciate the sentiment, I think trees would help to increase the value of the lot, for lots on Mercer Street. I'm not in favor of eliminating the street.
Either way.
Okay.
So we're going to have to put a couple of trees in from there and show them on the plan, or the draw. Hey, I tried.
Yeah, I tried, I appreciate it. I caught that.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any other questions from the board.
Anybody else on the board have any questions of Mr. Titus? Anyone from the audience? Titus, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I have left is a closing statement, is if you care to hear it, I can do that quick.
One note, Mr. Chair. With the exceptions of the adjustments made by the board in this hearing, I would request that Mr. Cole's report, the compliance of Mr. Colonel, the comments and recommendations in Mr. Cole's report be many conditional approval. Do you have any objection to that, Counsel?
The only specific item that I want to highlight again is with respect to the gravel driveway.
Right.
Mr. Fanko did testify, he'll be in contact with his neighbor, he doesn't want to be bound by a written agreement that would then be binding upon a future owner of Mr. Fanko, Mr. Fanko's property. So item number nine in subsection D, we just asked that it do not be a condition that there's an agreement.
Be best efforts.
My, my notes indicate exactly that, it will not be conditional approval with best efforts.
Anybody, excuse me, before you start, anybody from the audience have any comments on the application? Yeah, sorry, testimony beginning, yes, sir. For the record, please state your name and address.
Please do your name and address.
Yes, I'm Albert Scope and I live on 152 West Summit Street.
Could you spell your last name, please?
S.K.O.P.
Thank you.
I just, I got the letter in the mail indicating that this process was this far along. I got excited and I just wanted to come and support my neighbors about three doors down. So yeah, the explosion was pretty loud for me too, it kind of went right through me and we're just eager to welcome them back to the building.
One day I could do a little bit of history of how it became the building. 1963. Anyone else? Someone like to move for the closing of the public portion of this application?
So move second.
Second, on paper?
I like.
Opposed? Okay. Sign in?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, we appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to present the application. We hope it has been persuasive. The application proposes an appropriate use of the property and it fits in well with the neighborhood. The applicant faces several practical hardships, which the testimony bears out. And they arise essentially from pre-existing conditions. There's the 50-foot setback, it's a corner lot. There's an eight-foot side yard setback, there's 25-foot front yard setback to summit. And as Mr. Titus said in his testimony, currently that leaves only 17 feet within which to build a house. The benefits outweigh the detriment. This eliminates a vacant lot, it's a permitted use, it fits well within the neighborhood. The purposes of zoning, an open space will be satisfied. We can't urge the board enough to consider how appropriate this application is. And Mr. Scope's testimony helps with my next point. This is an aesthetic improvement. Everyone is looking forward to a home that people live in, in Somerville, looking forward to being rebuilt. The proposed dwelling is attractive and will comply with all building codes. As I said before, it eliminates prior non-conforming front yard issues to Mercer Street. And we certainly don't believe that there'll be any negative impacts. Uh, this is a single-family residential dwelling in a residential district. Despite the variance, the lot can accommodate this use as it meets all setback and pervious coverage, uh, and other requirements of the ordinance, except for the limitations that we've already outlined. And as Mr. Fankow said in his testimony, and Mr. Titus, uh, has also acknowledged in relation to Mr. Cole's report, and as I myself said, uh, the applicant will comply with the conditions, and, uh, we mean that. I see no substantial detriment to the public good, uh, nor will there be an impact on the master plan or the zoning ordinance. Uh, this application promotes general wel- welfare, uh, and the benefits of granting this application significantly outweigh any potential detriment. We're hopeful for your positive vote. Thank you for your time.
Good. The public portion has been closed. Board, what's your favor? No brain, I mean. I'm glad for, we have...
Only condition is the one that we discussed, which would be, uh, for, you know, compliance with Michael's report, uh, and our standard conditions of approval. This is pretty straightforward.
I wanna say one thing. I wanna really compliment you for having the courage to wait this whole thing out for such a long period of time and to come back into town. Uh, it's, uh, it's great, and thank you for not selling the lot and running away, but I know this is a financial hardship that you went through anytime anybody loses a home, so...
Emotional emotions, Paulson.
Very excited to see a, a nice new building going up in the neighborhood. Jim, thank you.
There's a lot of limitations.
Family return.
Someone like to move?
So move.
Move?
Second.
Second? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Roll call.
Mr. Adair?
Yes.
Mr. Rajivit?
Say it.
Rajivit?
I, I do the same, but I didn't even spell this word.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Badninsky?
Badninsky.
Badninsky? Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Alott?
Yes.
Mr. Flores?
Yes.
And Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Carrie?
Thank you very much.
That's all.
Thank you. Any other business coming from the board?
While courting the preference of the board's overall... Uh, scheduling.
We have, we have the four three applications, the hot, uh, the carried from last year. And we're supposed to hear it November, and John Madden is planning to adhere it, so... So, this is the one reporting for the two families, the flood hazard area where the architectural plans, this, and the board was getting.
Correct.
Okay? And the board has to hear that, so he's there, so it starts all over again. We continued it, and we had a hearing date. He planned it, couldn't make it. So we asked for another continuance, and here we are. So we have four applications right now that are all deemed complete.
For what?
That's the question for the board. So the reorganization meeting, uh, if you go by the timeline, the fourth street is the first one. And then, do you wanna hear two that night, or just one? Because we have...
So why go at night?
We have...
It takes about fifteen minutes.
We have a, we have an apartment building. We have another residential, sixty Mercer.
So might, we already scheduled Macal... Macalvy?
We have Macalvy, which I don't know, council is, is not able to act that quickly on that. I don't know that. Uh, but assuming we have Macalvy, then we have the fourth street. Should that be the agenda for January? And then we'll just go through first come, first served. Now, we're gonna see who are.
Is that what we're gonna do?
I probably have some resolutions, but I mean, it may on that, like...
Okay. So it'll be the fourth street and Macalvy on the reorganization, reorganization in January. Then I'll deal with Jasmine.
I'm screening one out, I'm sorry.
No, I'll do it. Assuming, you know, that she's still here, that we'll be dealing with that, we don't know. Uh, she's welcome to, but she's not taken. She says she's busy right now. She doesn't wanna be permanent. So...
It's a great board.
Right. So...
Which one we have?
Right. So then, so that everybody knows, whether it is two, then we have sixty Mercer Street that's, uh, that's deemed complete. That's another residential, and we have two apartment buildings. One for Deutsch, who wants to build, consolidate lots. And then the other one is a conversion of an office building, a by-story right across from Brawl, into apartments. And they have assisted living on the first floor, which brings it here because it's the used parents. So I was giving them, just telling you the flavor that's coming up. We have...
We're busy.
We're busy. We have four, and we have two more in the hopper that has been deemed complete. Another conversion from a single family to a two-family. So we have a bunch of applications coming up in the next couple of months.
Which is pretty important.
And Chairman, the minutes for November second are also on this agenda.
Okay, bro.
That's easy, bro.
Yeah.
Okay.
We got it. Thank you.
Someone move for Chairman?
So move. Everybody have a holiday? Not gonna see anybody down next year.
Don't we have to move? Don't we, uh, Jasmine, don't we have to vote on that?
The minutes for November second?
Yeah. We should have it, yeah.
Someone wanna move the minutes of November second?
So move.
November second, on favor?
Aye.
Who's Carrie? You wait till you get to my age. Oh, you are my age.
I passed. Happy holidays, everybody. Take care.